Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back for ordinance 24-0521. Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2025. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee to my left, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, to my immediate right, Nia Garrett, staff to the committee. Also joined by Representatives from Mayor's Office, the Council President's Office. We are here today to start with the Committee on Historical and Architectural Preservation, or CHAP, and then immediately following that, Department of Planning. Normally, we would have our Executive Director of CHAP with us, Eric Holcomb. He is on bereavement leave due to the passing of his father, so our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Holcomb and his family at this time. Director Ryer is going to be taking the lead on this one. I've also invited Ben Guthorn, Director of Legislative Reference, to join us, as I have some historical questions on the legislation. So Director, what we're going to do is, we're just going to do CHAP, and then we'll take a one or two-minute recess, and then we'll kick off planning. So if you could please take it away. And do you have anyone here who's going to be testifying on CHAP with you? Do you have anyone here who will be testifying on CHAP with you?
No, I will do it, but the entire CHAP team is here for any questions.
Who's the number two in CHAP?
Lauren Shizik is...
Lauren, good to see you. Bolton Hill Planner.
Good to see you.
Wonderful.
Our CHAP team is in the first row behind the rail.
Hello, CHAP team, thank you for joining us.
And there's a new person starting next week.
Look forward to meeting said new person. Take it away, Director.
Thank you, yeah, this is a little... So we will start with CHAP, and then jump back to the rest of the department's budget. So good morning, Chair and members of the Council. Thanks for inviting us here today to talk about the FY25 operating budget. This is the 60th anniversary of CHAP. We hosted a lecture by the CHAP Executive Director in early May on the history of preservation in Baltimore at the Pratt Library as a kickoff event. We'll be ongoing events during the summer and the fall. Note, it's also the 60th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act, which gives us some interesting opportunities to cross-pollinate the two events. But one thing I want to really stress, today are the CHAP performance targets. In particular, one where we did not meet our target, that's the percentage of ATPs, Authorization to Proceed. The target was 80%, we hit 55%. I recognize the problem with this performance target. We are down two people in the division at the moment, that actually is one-third of the division, but the division has dropped all of its other activities, including the anniversary, for the next 30 days while they get caught up on this performance standard. By way of explanation, if I can do that, there has been an increase in complex projects that take a lot of time and work, require more hearings by the actual commission. There's also been, and I think this is a good thing, an increase in first-time applicants, and an increase in applications for retroactive work. That means the DHCD inspection staff are doing their job and citing work in CHAP districts where there's not a permit. So we've done, we've made a couple of changes. The performance measure goes from a number to a percentage. We're still looking at a 70% target going forward, 71% in FY23, so this is quite doable. I do want to, you may know, we're trying, we have been trying for quite a while to diversify our CHAP work, and I can say this, I'm 69%, almost 70% of the permits were on formerly vacant properties. That is, I think, a really, really helpful progressive number for our redevelopment work. And over half were either in the middle market or the weaker market typologies, less than half were in the higher market typologies. Finally, this year, there will be an expansion of the tax credit eligibility to include properties in the Baltimore National Heritage Area, which is very large and includes probably 40% of the geographic area of the city. So that will add neighborhoods in all quadrants of the city, south, southwest, northwest, west, northeast. So I think you'll start, I hope you'll see a beginning of a larger impact with that in our neighborhoods. Finally, the last performance measure is around engagements, and that's really, I think I want to say, as much as the breadth of engagement, as well as the depth of engagement. Our definition of engagement is a site visit, an in-person meeting, or a virtual meeting with partners, elected officials, community associations, boards, that aren't part of the CHAP design review for ATP or hearings. These are new groups that we're trying to reach out to. So I think that's a significant performance measure, and we want to keep doing that. To support that, our CHAP staff are out there in the neighborhoods, and all the existing ones, like Sharp-Ledden Hall, Serling Street, Old Town, Union Square. They're also attending meetings with neighborhood organizations and other groups that are exploring local designations, such as Evergreen Lawn, or Friends of St. Peters. And then we, one other highlight so far in 2024 is coordination with Live Baltimore to revamp their training module for realtors regarding the tax credit, and jump-starting our participation in their events. You may remember the Real Estate Disclosure Bill passed in October of '23, requiring disclosure of local historic designation during the real estate closing process. And then finally, I want to highlight, there's been a lot of activity in the press about the closure of 40 archdiocese buildings. So as soon as we get through this period of focusing on the performance measures this month, I hope we can put together some resources for communities that have these locations. There has been years and years of work around adaptive reuse of churches, and we think there can be very positive outcomes for some neighborhoods with the reuse of former church buildings. So we'll be putting together a package for our citizens to understand that, and to look at any weaknesses in our system, whether it be zoning code or what have you, that we can change to facilitate the reuse of those buildings. So I think I would stop there, see if there's any questions specifically about CHAP.
Several, that's perfect. Director, give me a 60-second CHAP credit for dummies explanation. Walk me through in 60 seconds what the CHAP credit is.
Sure. So the CHAP credit applies the Secretary of the Interior Historic Standards to a construction project, typically a full renovation project. There's a minimum threshold of a quarter, 25% of the value of the project. So this is not used for renovations to Guilford Mansions, because that threshold keeps those properties out of the mix typically. But it is used as...
Pardon me, Director, give me a quick numerical example.
Yeah, the credit is for 100% of the increased assessed value of a property is a credit for 10 years. So the property, there's an appraisal done before the renovation and after the renovation, and the difference is frozen for a 10-year period.
Can you just give me, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I understand how the credit works, but give me an example, if a property is worth X, and Y improvements are made, and it is now worth Z.
Sure, let's take a property, East Baltimore, a two-story row house, purchase price might be $40,000 or $50,000, and a developer will put 100, maybe 150 even, but probably 100 into the property. So for the length of the credit, and it's transferable, so the buyer will pay property tax on the $50,000, not the 150 or $200,000. So there is an affordability issue to this that's significant, that can cut $200 a month off a mortgage. So there's an unknown affordability benefit there that's significant. There's also, and this is out of my bailiwick, but there's a lot of documentation around the halo effect of historic preservation. It imbues some value to surrounding properties, because in general, the reason for the credit is that the work is of a higher quality, higher-quality materials, higher-quality workmanship, and our staff provide an extra set of eyes to ensure that quality. That's how it works.
Director Guthorn, can you walk me through the legislative history of CHAP credit reauthorizations by the City Council over the past decade or so?
Certainly. So for the record, my name is Ben Guthorn, I'm the Director of the Department of Legislative Reference. I've been asked here today by the Chair to report factually on legislative history of the CHAP tax credit. In the short amount of time that I've had to do the research within the past, let's see here, three, four years, this credit has been extended, generally speaking, for a year each time, and that is starting back in 2021 and continuing forward every year. I have three bills here, 20414, 21105, and 23192, and respectively, those were introduced by the Council President, Councilmember Bullock, then by yourself, Mr. Chair, and then again by Councilmember Bullock, and again by yourself, Mr. Chair. And then going back before that period of time, it looks to me, from the legislative history, that there are reauthorizations going back, generally speaking, every one to two years, going back to 2014. Prior to that, it seems like the renewal period was three to four years. And just as a note, this credit was established in 1995. And comparatively, I'll say that other credits that do require renewals, typically speaking, are renewed for between four, five, six years at a time. That being said, within Subtitle 10 of Article 28, which is where our tax credits are located within the city code, not every credit requires renewal, so they are on a continuing basis.
Thank you.
If I could add one thing, just before COVID, CHAP satisfied, I think it was its 20th anniversary of the credit, and a total of $1 billion invested in the city with the CHAP tax credit.
Thank you. And Executive Director Holcomb has shared with me in the past, like colored heat maps of the city to show where the credit has been utilized.
Yeah.
Can you speak to what one of those maps looks like, and the story that it tells?
I'm not that familiar with it, but it's been heavily used in East and West Baltimore, as well as South Baltimore, as you know. That map will change drastically with the addition of the heritage areas. So vast portions of southwest, for example, will be added into eligible areas. Other parts of west and northwest, as well as northeast, will be eligible going forward.
Thank you. Lauren Shiznik, what's your title with...
Yes, Lauren Shizik, and I am the Historic Preservation Supervisor, and I'm the Acting Executive Director currently.
Ms. Shiznik?
Yes.
That's a lot of titles. Assuming that, just because this is your programmatic area, that was a wonderful, high-level description by the Director, I assume you're a bit more intimately familiar with the map I referenced?
Yes.
Is there anything you would like to add to the Director's description of the map?
Yes, I would say that, I think that, I just want to add the caveat that I have been the tax credit administrator for the past three months, so I'm newly stepping into the, so the, you know, I'm getting familiar with the data. What I can say is that, yes, that characterization is accurate, and that what we are seeing is, we are seeing more use of this credit in the areas that we would consider middle-market or weaker housing markets, and like a really noticeable increase in those areas, in West Baltimore, in East Baltimore, and moving north and northwest. So it is a trend that we're very pleased to see, and you know, we have some really incredible programs that are utilizing it, Black Women Build, you know, purchase the Sarah Ann Street houses, all of those houses on Sarah Ann Street are utilizing the tax credit.
Excellent. In your comings and goings and travels, and your role in CHAP, and you've been at CHAP as long as I can remember, not to date you age-wise, have you ever heard an argument that this credit is either A, not equitable, or B, does not have a very impactful return on investment, not only for the property and the city's finances, but more importantly, the surrounding neighborhoods in which the credit is executed?
To answer your first question about equitable, we have received, in my time, I know that we have heard from communities and from individuals who would like to be eligible for a credit, because they think it would be transformative for them personally and for their communities, and they were not eligible for it, because, you know, while 90% of the city's building stock is old enough to be considered historic, 90% of the city is not designated as a national register district or local district, you know, the entire city is not designated as historic and thus is not eligible. So the recent addition of the heritage area to the eligibility for this credit does help. We would like to expand it further, and we're looking into ways to do that, into more areas. So in terms of the equitability, it's simply a matter of what the trigger is for eligibility, and I think that we could talk about what that trigger is, to make it more expansive and eligible, more accessible to folks. To your second question...
Can we, can you pause for one second, please?
Sure.
The Director might have covered this. When does the expansion of eligibility to include the heritage areas go into effect?
That actually came into effect in October of 2023, and we've actually already received two tax credits, two tax credit applications in that area.
Where were those?
I'm sorry, I don't have that data, but I can get that to you.
Okay, second question.
Second question, can you repeat it for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Have you gotten any arguments about the return on investment for the credit? A, for the property, B, for the city's finances, and C, most importantly, for the surrounding neighborhoods in which the credit is executed?
Sure, Chris wants to, yep, sure, I can, would you like me to do that, or would you like to do that? Yeah, okay. So, you know, we, several years ago, hired Place Economics, which is the premier historic preservation economic analysis firm, they do work all over the country. And what they, they came up with several really interesting takeaways in the report, one of which is talking about the halo effect for properties. You know, of course, it's sort of that notion of, you know, a high tide, you know, raises all ships. And so if one property on the block, and particularly when we're talking about row houses, where what one neighbor does to their building intimately affects what happens to the adjacent property owner. But when one property is on that block utilizes the historic tax credit, their property value goes up, there's a halo effect around the surrounding, in, I think in a 500-square-foot area around it, where it increases the property values of all the surrounding neighbors' properties, you know, to varying degrees. And so particularly for legacy homeowners, that is a tremendous help, because one of the issues that we have in the city is people own their homes, and there is not a lot of equity in them. And so this really does help impact, not just the individual property that utilizes this credit, but it positively impacts the surrounding neighborhoods and surrounding neighbors. Okay. Thank you.
We've put a link to the map, and we'll put a link to the report in the chat of this meeting.
The map that illustrates the areas where the credit's been executed, is that for one year, or that's for, what period of time does that map cover?
BBMR, in the tax, or in our bill response to the last extension, which would have been legislative file 220299, we showed the distribution of the tax, we have a map sharing the distribution of the credit for the last 10 years, and I would be happy... Email it? Yes.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Isaac Kitzey Schleifer, 5th District, member of the Committee, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. Lauren, thank you so much. Anything else you want to add on the credit or the utility of the credit?
Yes, I would, I would say that, I think that this credit, what we have heard from people who have benefited from the credit, who have used the credit, is that it has been transformative in communities, and in allowing first-time homebuyers to purchase their homes at a price point that is accessible. And from what I understand, I think, you know, we, like I said, you know, or as Chris said, you know, several years ago, we achieved $1 billion of private investment in the city in housing stock, and for the most part, yes, while it is being utilized in neighborhoods that are stable neighborhoods, and some would argue strong neighborhoods, what we're seeing is that as developers move out of those neighborhoods, they run out of houses, and so then they move into adjacent communities. And so they're, you know, we are seeing a lot more activity moving from Highland Town to Patterson Park to Baltimore Highlands. And, you know, so it's, the benefits of it are shifting outward into additional neighborhoods that haven't seen that type of investment for a very long time, and we see it as one of the most, CHAP, of course, we're going to be biased, but we think that it is one of the most helpful programs for neighborhoods and communities in the city, and it is used very often to rehabilitate vacant properties back into homes.
Suffice to say, you're a fan.
Indeed, indeed I am.
Excellent, thank you. Director?
Yes, sir.
That was a trick question, not a trick question, I'm going to put you on the spot. If you had to use one word to describe what it is that people investing in the city want, what is the one thing that they need, how would you describe that in one word?
Ooh, one word?
It's okay, I have an opinion, there's no right answer to this question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to tell you the word I would use?
Sure.
Certainty.
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 Good point, that's a very good point.
If you have a different word, you're welcome to share it at any point during the hearing. The point of that is that we do not have certainty around how long the CHAP credit will be here, because every fall, Councilman Bullock and I receive an email from Executive Director Holcomb, begging us to reauthorize the credit, because it's going to expire, and I think it expires at the end of February generally, or maybe it's changed, I don't know, we've reauthorized this so many times, I've lost track.
It's expiring in August of this year.
August, pick a month. We get an email from him, and a phone call, and a text message, I appreciate the Executive Director's diligence here, requesting us to extend it, and there is no certainty around the credit. So, Deputy Mayor Williams, you've joined us today, is there anything that's been said in the last 15 minutes that you disagree with, or anything that you would like to add, independent of anything related to any work group or task force, or any type of activity that may be occurring at the moment, because I'm going to get to that momentarily? And if you would like to add it, please feel free to come on up, or grab a chair, whatever suits you best.
Good morning. For the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community and Economic Development. I don't think I have anything to add, I don't know where you're going with the questioning, but...
Anything that you disagree with, that you've heard so far in the last...
No, no, I think, I think it made sense about the usefulness of the credit, and I have other thoughts to add that can go, can go on a longer tangent, but I think there's lots of, I mean...
I have all the time in the world for the next six months, so please humor me.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the tax credit work group, but I'm sorry if I missed the beginning of the discussion, because I came from an appointment. Just, we are looking at, thinking more broadly about how we are using our tax credit spending across the board, and every different of the dozen or so regular property tax credits we have, I've been thinking, and as part of the development community before I started my career, started my role here as Deputy Mayor, we should be thoughtful about what we want to fund and how we want to do it across the board, because I think there are some instances where we are counter, we're like doing a tax credit to promote one thing, and we have separate credit for a different thing that is at odds with what we want to achieve as a city. So a part of the goal, in my mind, with the tax credit work group, is to have more of a North Star about what we want to do, and what we want to promote for development in the city.
Mr. Guthorn, do you, does Bullock or I have this topic reserved?
I'd have to get back to you on that, sir.
One, okay. If we had a waiver from the Council President, would it be possible to have an extension drafted for introduction on Monday?
Just for the record, the Hopper deadline is today at 12 o'clock.
That's why I asked the question, fully aware.
Just for the record, I'm sure that we can accommodate that request.
Thank you so much, sir, I appreciate it. So the tax credit work group, which was first announced, bear with me, I'm just going to throw out there, September of 2021, we'll call it September of 2021, the mayor announced the Tax Credit Work Group at the Downtown Partnership Annual Meeting. I was standing like six feet from him when he announced it. And the work group is now going to be meeting in September to discuss CHAP, is that correct?
Correct, I think that's the schedule.
So BBMR published our report, the Comprehensive Review of the City's Current Tax Credit Programs, in August of 2022. I believe the work group announcement followed the release of that report. Again, some of this predated my time with the city, so I'm fuzzy on years.
Okay, so, and the credit currently expires when?
In August of this year.
In August of... In August of this year. So, council needs to take immediate action on this.
Correct.
Irrespective of what number of years we land at. So, Deputy Mayor Williams, what, what is the, or Budget Director Larson, what is the administration's appetite for doing a three-year extension?
I shared that request with the administration this morning, and we would be able to report, huddle back with you very soon to discuss what that could potentially look like.
How, how soon?
I have, I've not been able to, to speak in person with my colleagues...
Before Friday?
Yes, certainly.
Okay.
And Chairman, if I've, if I may, just on the, the status of the Tax Credit Work Group. So, they began to meet in March of 2024. So, what they, the work group is, is meeting essentially on a monthly basis. They're taking up one credit at each of their meetings. The, the work was designed to first talk about the homeowner protection, tax credits, and then the summer transition to the development tax credits. So, the, the group met on March 26th. They discussed the homestead tax credit. They then met on April 30th to discuss the targeted homeowner's tax credit. On Tuesday, June 11th, so next Tuesday, they'll talk about, they'll convene to talk about the state homeowner's tax credit. That will wrap up the work on the homeowner-protected credits. And then, starting in July, the, the work group will shift to the development tax credits, which will include CHAP on September 26th.
Who set the, the agenda for that work group?
This was, was set by the conveners of the work group. So, Deputy Director Bob sent me in consultation with his partners in the mayor's office, who are leading the work. Again, I, the, I believe, I don't, I'm trying not to get out in front of my boss here, but I, I think that the, the way that these were organized were, again, to, to talk about them in the two categories of the homeowner-protected credits and the development. I, you know, I would, we can, I can follow up in terms of Bob's strategy for how he sequenced the individual ones. I can say that the, the CHAP item and the timing of that was, was not slated in the context of the extension. We, we, they're, I don't think that the work group, work plan was aligned necessarily with the timing of when we needed to consider the extension.
Got it. Okay, so I will hear back from you or Bob in, like, today or tomorrow, hopefully, about this bill that I'm going to ask Ben to, if you can get it drafted up for a three-year renewal. And then we can... Well, we'll talk offline in the next couple hours, if that's okay. Thank you. Okay, all right. Colleagues, specifically Schleifer and Conway, right now, we're just doing CHAP, so we're going to wrap up CHAP. Yep. Schleifer, and Conway and Ramos. And then, once we get CHAP wrapped up, then we will excuse, uh, Mr. Gothorn. Any questions on the legislation, so we can dismiss Director Gothorn? Okay, you're good. Thank you so much for the quick response on the drop of a dime. I appreciate it. Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can somebody answer, how do you remove a historic designation from a block that currently is designated as a CHAP block?
Is this a local district you're talking about?
Yeah, like a block in my district that's historic, that nobody seems to want it to be historic. And it's just creating a lot of headaches. So I want to have less headaches.
Councilman, can you, can you give the specific block or neighborhood?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to out the block on national television, but if you could just, if you can just tell me, how do you remove the designation? Is that a legislate, a piece of legislation? What's the process?
I believe it's an ordinance, correct? Local designation.
Lauren Shizik, again. Thank you for the question. Currently, there is no legal process. There is no process in the CHAP ordinance, in our enabling legislation. There is no process for removing a district or a portion of a district. In, I guess it was a couple of years ago, this is something that we did explore because there was some interest from, there's some questions about that from a local district. And the, the process, it would have to be a legal, it would have to be an ordinance. It would have to be introduced as an ordinance in order to have it removed. However, right now, we don't have any, you know, any way to determine the ineligibility of what is being proposed for removal. Typically, you know, we have a process for designation that is based on criteria for evaluation. Are properties or neighborhoods eligible for their significance for associations with historic people in Baltimore's history? For its association with broad patterns of Baltimore history? For architectural significance or for archaeological significance? So, a designation typically takes place using those criteria. If we were to reverse it, it would typically be, presumably, not an attorney, but presumably, it would be a reversal of that process. It would be based on eligibility of the resources, not necessarily... I, I don't know about a process that would be based on owners' lack of interest in being in the district anymore. I do, though, just want to bring up something, Director Ryer, is it okay if I talk about conservation districts? Something that we are exploring is a separate, and we're proposing, we're hoping to move forward, I'm saying soon, but once we're staffed up, is to introduce sort of a lower level of district designation that would be essentially a CHAP light, Historic Preservation Light, where we think about the overall community character, not the nitty-gritty details of each building. Where we think about demolition, new construction, additions, and not worry about windows, et cetera. One of the, and your question is relevant because one of the things that we are thinking about as CHAP is, what happens when we have local districts that say, well, we became a local district because that was the only option. But now that there's this other option for a historic preservation/conservation district, we want to be that instead. We basically want to, I'm not downgrade, to, you know, to just speak bluntly. We need to figure that out. We need to figure out that process. So, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you directly, but I want to explain sort of how, how we have explored it in the past.
Gotcha, okay. That's a little concerning. So like, once they opt in and go through that process, they're just stuck?
Designation is in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Director, Acting Director, good to see you. I, just a question, a question out of curiosity. I think CHAP has, in my mind, two real opportunities. One is sort of protecting that broad fabric of communities with the look and style of buildings. But then also, whether or not we intend it, it has a huge role in telling the story of the city through architecture, through history, through important lives and folks and where they've lived. I'm curious if we have, or we attempt, or we should attempt, maybe I'm leading the question here, but do we pursue opportunities to invest in, renovate, and improve buildings that are CHAP-eligible or should be CHAP-eligible? And we should explore that in order to better tell the story of Baltimore?
Could you repeat the last part of that question?
In order to better tell the story of Baltimore.
Yeah, good question. I think there are a couple of different answers to it. First of all, almost all of Baltimore is eligible. Eligibility is 50 years, so almost all of Baltimore is eligible. I mean, this has been a fabulously successful program. So, a lot of structures, a billion dollars' worth of investment has occurred because of this. And I, I will say, we're all quite cognizant of the fact that many of the remaining structures that are eligible are in really bad shape. They've been vacant for a long time. That said, the field of preservation in general is shifted partially because of this trend, its 60th anniversary, away from preserving buildings, per se, to preserving stories. So there's a human element to preservation that is getting larger and larger over time. And I would expect that to happen here in Baltimore also, that we began exploring the stories of the city, the people. People change. The buildings may stay the same, but the people change. And that is an important component, or even more important component in the future of preservation.
Yeah, I, I think there's a huge opportunity, I think, for us to, to tie this program to that sort of storytelling component. Maybe, maybe that doesn't happen with this program, but certainly, the efforts that this program pursue, they, they go lock and key with, with those very same efforts to tell that story. And, you know, part of the charm of our city is exactly that story.
Yeah.
So I, you know, as we think about this effort, yes, it is a tax benefit so that people can buy their first homes. My first home was a CHAP home, and it was amazing. But I, I also think, you know, this is a real opportunity to better tell the story of Baltimore. And I think that's what draws people in. That's what helps people to appreciate their home and hopefully realize that they're only temporarily, you know, going to be in that home, and hopefully it'll last for 100 more years. So I, you know, just, just a thought, so...
Yeah, I do, I do want to highlight our sort of sister agency that's a separate nonprofit now, Baltimore Heritage Area, does a lot of work around that storytelling.
How do you guys, how do those efforts coordinate? Is there like...
The Planning Department incubated Baltimore Heritage Area, wrote the original grant, that received the designation and, and the funding. We now have a line item in the capital budget for the heritage area that they then re-grant to applicants. It's a capital grant. And other than that, I, I know we're working with them. There's a federal civil rights trail designation for the Pennsylvania Avenue, so we're assisting them with that. So I'd say it's more informal than formal. They are a private nonprofit, independent nonprofit now. They started out as a city organization.
You know, I, I spoke with the Acting Director a bit about a property of my site, in my district, tied to a very, very famous rapper by the name of Tupac. And the importance of acknowledging that history, leaning into it, because history is happening right now. And, you know, the nod to those, those people that have touched our city and left their imprint here are great opportunities for us to highlight our city, the experiences, the good, the bad, and the ugly, as a way to better tell our story and hopefully inspire and uplift people to, to be a part of that story. So I, just a thought. You know, I think those, those opportunities, there probably should be a more formal collaboration between the historical side of things and the CHAP building protection and investment side of things. So, just a thought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say one thing first about the Tax Credit Work Group. I'm not a formal member, but I insert myself in the conversation. And the way that it's been working the last couple of meetings is that, you know, there are different topics, but it's discussion. There hasn't been decisions made at each of these meetings. There's sort of leaning of the committee and all of that. So, I think making, it makes sense to take action on, on expanding the credit. I do think that there's work to be done. I think any changes to the credit, I think some of, if we were going to make some changes, we'd have to get some permission from the General Assembly and then make changes locally. So there's, there's a lot there. And it's an important credit. I would like to see it in more areas of the city, frankly. I have one neighborhood in particular I'm thinking about. So, just wanted to say that I would support that expansion. The, I am a humongous fan of, I've already designated three properties in my district in the last three, three years that I've been on the council, three and a half. And I have a few more that I'm interested in. And I do think that it's so important to do this, not just for the tax benefit, but in order to, again, tell the story, make sure we're preserving the really unique architecture, which is one of the reasons why so many of us are attracted to the city. At least I was a long time ago when I got here. And so, I really appreciate all the work that CHAP is doing and continues to do. And, you know, I want to be able to support that as much as possible. My question is, could, Acting Director, could you tell us a little bit more about the Conservation District? And what the difference is between, and I have asked for this, I don't know if I got it. I probably missed it. It might be in my email somewhere. But if we have it, it would be great to have, like, a chart comparison, you know? Some people are map learners, some people are visual learners, some people are chart people. I am a chart person. So if we can get a, you know, side-by-side of historic district, historic landmark, conservation district, what are the differences and the similarities between all of those so that when we get that legislation, we're very clear on what that is? But I would be curious to just give us a little bit more detail about what that is. And then I'll make the formal request for that amazing chart.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. So we don't have the legislation yet. So, right now, the differences are, the idea, it's, it's still fungible, right? It's, we haven't introduced it, it hasn't been accepted. But conceptually, and also, I just want to say that, you know, conservation districts are something that other cities have, and other jurisdictions, are doing across the country. So, we're not making this up. We have a really good roadmap of, you know, and we have the opportunity to learn, learn from our colleagues and others about, you know, how to roll it out, what worked, what to avoid, that sort of thing. In essence, the idea of a conservation district is to get away from the nitpicky curatorial aspect of preservation. We're not curating buildings, we're preserving communities. And that's different. And essentially, you know, with a local CHAP district, Historic Preservation District, we review and approve all exterior work. So that's, you know, alterations, that's additions, that's replacement, that's repair. And the reason behind that is because we want to make sure that the work that is done is, you know, high-quality and is not going to accidentally hurt the building. We see that a lot sometimes. But it's, it's a matter of what the purpose is. And so there are a lot of communities that are interested in preserving their overall character of their community, but they don't want to have that nitty-gritty level of detail. If they want that, they could go for historic tax credits. They could opt into that. But if they don't want to do that, what we would instead do with the Conservation District, instead of reviewing every little thing, it would be more broad, broad brush. It would be demolitions, it would be new construction, it would be large, major additions. And then, of course, we would also identify what are character-defining features of the neighborhood that we do want to retain. So if we have, you know, porch-front neighborhoods, you know, we have so many neighborhoods with, you know, porch fronts, Oriole bays, those would be, say, we would identify certain features within a community that we think are character-defining, like the porch fronts. Maybe, you know, I'm thinking of Ender Gardens Lakeside, how they have all the beautiful sort of stone, stone walls at the fronts of properties. Like, sort of, what are, what are some of those features that make this place feel, feel like a unique place, like a special place? So we would, we would largely just do broad-scale additions, demos, new construction reviews, but then do the detailed review of just certain features within the district that we would develop collaboratively with the neighborhood. I think that's something that I want to be very clear about. With all of our designations, we work particularly for the neighborhoods, we work collaboratively with the neighborhood on designating their communities. It's a multi-year process, tremendous amount of outreach and engagement. We take a vote, you know, we're, this is not... We take a vote, you know, this is not something, when we do designations, people come to us requesting it. We're not putting it on them. It is, you know, it is a request from the community, and we collaborate and respond. And that would be the way that we would approach all Conservation Districts, is it would be a collaborative conversation to serve the community.
But I thought that we were, I thought that we were thinking about making, allowing the tax credit to also be included as part of the Conservation Districts.
So Conservation Districts, the idea is that the Conservation Districts would then be eligible for tax credits. And what we're hoping to do is, in doing the Conservation Districts, that if we do it right, and we have to work with our colleagues at the state and federal level to make sure that it's acceptable, would be to make the conservations eligible not just for the CHAP historic tax credits, but also for the state and federal tax credits. And so many projects that receive CHAP tax credits often receive, they double or triple up their tax credits, so that they can layer and make the project that more financially viable. And so that would be the opportunity is to hopefully not just get those Conservation Districts eligible for the CHAP tax credit, but also for the credits at our state and local, or state and federal partners.
Sure. So, but what, my understanding and how the CHAP tax credit works is that there would, there is that very detailed, you know, you have to use the wood windows, and I'm just using windows as an example. You have to use the wood windows rather than the, whatever they use for them now.
Right.
And it doesn't sound like that might be a detail in the Conservation District. And this might be splitting hairs, and we can work this out, but how would that then work?
So what we do is, for our, yes, so it, any, people can opt into the tax credit. People can also decide not to opt into the tax credit.
Yeah, that's a good point. That is a totally good point, yeah.
So, you know, they can choose to. And also, you know, with our, with our tax credit, we apply our local, you know, our local CHAP design guidelines, which are frankly more broad and more progressive in terms of alternative materials, in terms of non-wood windows, in terms of solar panels, in terms of mitigation for climate change. We are lead-based paint, we are the only commission that allows for replacement of features due to lead-based paint health hazards, which is wild to say that that's, we're the only ones, but we're the only ones. You know, so we're more progressive in sort of the field of preservation than many of our colleagues in other places, so.
Thank you. I would like, at some point, maybe sometime this fall, is my little chart that has the comparisons. I think that would be super helpful for me and for others. And I'll make that a formal request, and I'll make sure to put it in writing. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions for CHAP? All right. We're in recess for CHAP, we're going to start up planning immediately. Anyone from the CHAP team that you want to excuse, please feel free to. I'll defer to you, Director.
Okay, we'll shift back to the agency as a whole. As you, as you know, the CHAP is a division in the Department of Planning, so when we get to that, it's a division and a service. So I will skip over that when we get to that. So let me start, I've got some talking points around the overview of the department. I really want to start with our goals for this coming year. I think they're very important, and you're going to see a lot of work around that. So the first goal is to, is to enhance our administrative capacity. We are trying, as an agency, we've really pivoted to bring more money into the city and also to push that money down to neighborhood levels. So whether it be federal or state money, there's a big chunk of recovery funds going through the department, philanthropic funding, all this to expand our work in preservation, community development, food policy, sustainability. That's goal number one. And then the second piece is around our staff development. We've had about two-thirds of the, of the agency is post-COVID, our post-COVID hires. So we've got this incredible injection of new talent in the, in the department, and we have also created a number of new roles on paper. They look more like administrative roles, but they are really to help us manage money, to make the capital budgeting process more transparent, more accountable, and also to be able to push money out to our community partners. So that's kind of the goals here for the fiscal year. This past year, we've been very focused on the City Comprehensive Plan. The City Comprehensive Plan is required by the State of Maryland every 10 years after the completion of the census. It will be coming to you in about three months with, as an ordinance. But we have, we're excited, we released a draft of it last week. It's available for public comment until July 30th, then we'll incorporate those comments into a bill that you all will see late August, maybe early September. The goal of the plan is to guide equitable neighborhood development over the next 10 years. It's literally a 10-year look ahead. As we close out this drafting of the initial, of the initial draft, we're focused on the next steps. The next steps will be the development of evaluation tools, resources, perhaps have an advisory board that oversees the implementation of the plan. We have been working with the Office of Civil Rights and Equity on a joint effort around the citywide equity plan. We, our contribution would be in the realm of the capital budget. And we're also revising or reforming the way we do neighborhood planning or small area planning with different focus areas. Haven't determined that yet, but to roll out a new service for neighborhoods, particularly around growth opportunities, like the Red Line or other TOD opportunities, and our middle neighborhoods, our middle neighborhood strategy. I do want to talk a little bit about staffing. As I said, we've been rebuilding the staff with a, with a new crew. We focused on retention, but we've also focused on provincial, professional development and standing up an equitable internship program. And by that I mean one that reimburses students that need assistance to work as an intern in the department. We've also ramped up our accountability and our ability to disperse funding both through the Pimlico Local Impact Aid and the Horseshoe Local Impact Aid. So we just brought somebody on board just to manage the Pimlico Local Impact Aid, that's a new position for the department. We also have two positions for the Horseshoe Impact Aid that moved from the mayor's office into the Planning Department. We have four Baltimore Core Fellows supporting our ARPA program. So you may or may not know, we have $15 million or more going out through the Clean Core Program, maybe another $11 million going out through our food policy team. And those are, with the assistance of Baltimore Core Fellows. And then we are expanding, working with the Department of Finance, expanding our ability to track and report accurately on the capital budget. That has not been a role that we've done in the past. There's a high demand coming from this body for that service. So we have elevated a GIS person in our office to assist with that, and we are bringing on another analyst to help that. We have a lot of work to do cleaning up Workday data that is wrong, to get to, to get to certain metrics that we know you want. But we, we will be there by the time I come back here next year. Finally, in our staffing, we now have an experienced fiscal officer, and we've moved some positions around. We have a full-time grants and contract administrator to help our staff administer this money, but also it helps our staff distribute money to community-based organizations. I was astounded yesterday to realize that in the last three years, the little, the Planning Department has put out $75 million on the street in the different neighborhoods all around the city. And either directly to community-based organizations or to nonprofit organizations that are like Healthy Neighborhoods or Clean Core. We've also, you'll see in the budget, we have little grants coming in from the state and the federal for park projects or garden projects, or the Inspire Program around 21st Century School. We're managing a half-million-dollar contract to re-revision, reimagine the state center complex when the state agencies pull out of that. All in all, we've identified at least 100 different neighborhoods that have been touched by this department over the last couple of years. And I hope we've improved our processes, our oversight, our compliance mechanisms, while incorporating considerations for accountability, transparency, equity, and incorporating community feedback. So, thank you. With that, if we can go, I'll start with the services. The next is the org chart. Org chart, we have five different services, plus the admin in the department, three divisions are standalone services, the Land Use Urban Design, CHAP, and the Community Planning Service. And then, actually, Community Planning shares with the Capital Budgeting Team, and Sustainability shares with the Food Policy Team. The Food Policy Team is an outgrowth of the Office of Sustainability. Service 761 is Development Oversight. We've consistently met our performance measures there every year, even when there are vacancies. We have only one vacancy at the moment, so I anticipate that being filled in the next 60 days or so. But I'm just very proud of their ability to turn around. Our, our city is at a disadvantage, a development disadvantage with regard to our tax rate. So we strive to be transparent and predictable in our development review process, and fast. And I think our staff does a very good job in that. The next is, 762 is the Preservation, that's, the entire CHAP district is in this, so I can skip through this. I've been through their position on the performance measures. 763 is our largest service by far. It's all the community planners. There are 11 different community planners in 11 different districts across the city. But there are also some special implementation groups within the service now. So I mentioned the Local Impact Aid, both for the racetrack and the casino. We also, we have the positions for the Green Network Plan, just to be clear on that. Green Network Plan started 10 years ago. It's a strategy to deal with demolition and vacant land in the city of Baltimore. We are going to be, if not already, the owners of a tremendous amount of vacant land in the city of Baltimore that is concentrated in three different parts of the city. There is no agency of vacant land management in the city of Baltimore. And I can assure you, the Parks Department does not want that role. So figuring that out, Clean Core Initiative is an outgrowth of that, and maintaining and managing vacant land is a big part of what the Clean Core program is designed to do. Also in this service is our, is our policy data analysis, which is where the capital budget lives. I've talked about how we're trying to beef up the accountability side of our capital budgeting work, but I also want to emphasize that this year, for the first time, working with the Department of Finance, we will be going to the voters for a 50% larger loan authorization for general obligation bonds. That is tremendous. The capital budget, as you all know from our earlier presentation, is tremendously underfunded. Our, our maintenance situation across the board gets worse every year, and has for decades, to be perfectly honest. This will be a big jump. We'll go, the authorization will go from $80 million a year to $125. We will spend that, if we can afford to spend that, we can afford to pay back the bonds. But we will, for the first time, have a larger obligation, and the Finance Department is working on a more systematic increase in that, in the future. Performance standards are really tough in this, in this service. So we have map requests. We get many fewer map requests these days because of the digital world that we live in. We also, these permits that go through this division tend to be the old urban renewal permits. We do have a three-day turnaround on the community planners for urban renewal permits. But as you know, the permit system is quite creaky right now, and many times we find out that, that we have been referred, the permit system has referred a permit to us, but we don't know, we haven't gotten it, so we don't know that we have the permit. And only until somebody complains do we find that out. So hopefully that will be changed with the new permit system. We go to 765 is Sustainability. So as I said earlier, this is both the Office of Sustainability and the Food Policy work. The Office of Sustainability manages our environmental planning, whether it be the Climate Action Plan, or even in a more urgent way, the emergency planning, the FEMA Plan for the city comes out of the Office of Sustainability, as well as a variety of FEMA-related programs. There's also programs coming out of the, and policy issues coming out of the Office of Sustainability. The Food Policy Team has pivoted. You may remember, they were three people. In 10 days, the Food Policy Team set up a massive food distribution system with the Convention Center, the National Guard, the Salvation Army, Amazon. I mean, an incredible effort during COVID. All three of those folks burned out during that process, and we now have a new team that, among other things, is administering a very large ARPA program that maintains our distribution system, but really is piloting some really innovative work around food as medicine, around urban agriculture, and a few other things. So that's the overview of the Office of Sustainability and the Food Policy Division. The, the performance measures we're using there are the number of people engaged by the Office of Sustainability, that is an unusually aggressive division. It's not the Community Planning Division. They get a lot of help from the Community Planning Division, but the Office of Sustainability has a very aggressive target of 75,000 people to engage in their work. And then the, the second one is a smaller grant, especially compared to our ARPA funding, called Healthy Food Priorities. But we do distribute ongoing funding to community-based organization through that, through that performance measure. And then finally, I've talked a lot about our administrative, this is not very sexy, but... But to be able to work effectively and now to distribute funds directly to community-based organizations, also to city agencies that impact communities, but to be able to directly and efficiently and transparently distribute funding that really has an impact on city neighborhoods. It finds the holes in city services that we can identify through our community planners and our community work. And this is the year where I think all that is coming together. A lot of it has come together already. We've been working on it for over a year. And as I said, especially with the capital budget, when I come back here this time next year, I think you'll see a big change in the way we can explain to you and the citizens where projects and monies are in the capital budget. So that's the end of my presentation. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Pardon me, did you introduce everyone on your staff that's here to testify?
Pardon?
Did you introduce everyone on your staff here that's to test?
I did not.
Okay, that's my fault because we started off, the hearing started off weird. Can you just do first and last name and position title? And then we'll get into questions.
So first, I'd like to introduce my right and left hand. The two other directors in the department are Stephanie Smith, the second row, and Nicole Stewart here in the first row. And then, as I said, we have five divisions in the agency. We've talked about CHAP already. Land Use and Urban Design is Eric Tiso, Stabs the Planning Commission. Sarah Parnealum oversees the capital budgeting and the policy. And Data Analysis, Chad Hayes is relatively new, but not new to the department or the work. Just new to the Division Chief of Community Planning. And Taylor LaFave, Taylor LaFave oversees the food policy. And Ava Richardson, over on my left, is the Director of the Office of Sustainability.
Thank you so much, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just got a few questions. And so if we could also just keep the answers brief because I got to run to a constituent event. So maybe this would be for Eric, or planning as a whole. What impact have you guys seen from the changes at the BMZA on the overall growth of the city? I know in my district, I've seen an impact. I've seen people put their house on the market and sell and move. And so just wanted to see if you guys are tracking this on a citywide level and what impacts you're seeing.
Sure, I can try and take that one. Thank you for the question. I think our comprehensive overhaul of the zoning code that hit in 2017 has been an outrageous success. Previously, the board was seeing around 700 to 1,000 cases per year. They're down to in the low-mid 300s annually now. So that means we right-size things significantly. A vast majority of appeals, just from anecdotal evidence, since Martin French retired, I am now the one that has to sit through those hearings. But a vast majority of them appear to be approvals. I'd have to dig to get you a rough proportionality. But the board is still moving.
Yes, I was, I apologize for not being so clear. I wasn't talking about the comprehensive rezoning. I was focused more on like the variances and the new practice that started last year to basically properties that do not have, you know, a unique shape to it or something like that, that are now being denied where, you know, neighbors with the exact same scenario months prior were all getting approved. So that's the, what I was looking at.
Sure. And without wanting to speak too far for another agency in their internal processes, I think the board has been very careful, at least in recent times, to actually apply the rule of law. And they are, even though they have far fewer cases, they are deliberating on each one. They're making exact findings. They're actually applying the requirements of code. And in that shift, that might have had some cases that previously were just swept on through where there was no objection previously. They're having to look through the code and apply the law. And normally, that's a good thing, but we understand some folks may be caught in that process shift.
Okay. Director, how long, how many years have you been here so far?
Five years.
Five years. So if you recall from your confirmation hearing, I asked you, you know, how would we know, how would the citizens of Baltimore know, you know, that the Planning Department has accomplished their goal and their mission under your leadership? How would you be tracking them as the leader of the agency? You had said at the time that you were going to do a survey of, you know, people's quality, you know, how they feel the quality of life and direction of the city was at the time. And then five years later, you would do that same survey. And the hope would be that people would have felt that the direction of the city is going in the right direction as far as planning and capital improvements, as well as their quality of life has improved. So my question for you is, did you do that initial survey? And do you plan on doing another survey this year?
No, we did not do a survey. I don't think we have the capacity to do that. I think that there's a much greater, more nuanced answer to that. And to break it up into annual statements, which is what I do in this hearing. This year, we have talked a lot about pushing resources down to communities. I believe through our daily work that that has been very well received. We have a group of people that we work with, whether it be the Pimlico Local Impact Aid in your district or the 100 community-based sites for food distribution, whether it be the 12 neighborhoods in South Baltimore in the Casino District, whether it be the, whatever, we're up to 15 or more neighborhoods in the Clean Core Program, whether it be the 20 neighborhoods that are new to the Middle Neighborhood Program. Across the board, when either we hear complaints and change our trajectory or people appear to be satisfied with our work.
So, I guess, okay. So, I mean, that was, that was part of my challenge five years ago was when you look at the capital budget year over year. So over the course of five years, I think at the time, we were looking at a projected capital budget of about $4 billion. I'm not sure what it ultimately ended up being over the past five years, but we're talking about billions of dollars. And we don't know if we're getting a good return on investment. Now, great work is being done all across the city. And we have a lot of great city employees who are supporting that work and are, you know, helping put some fuel on the fire to help some of these, you know, some of these community groups grow and do more impactful work. And that's great. But our responsibility here as fiscal agents for the city is really to look at return on investment when we're working on a budget and we're deciding what money goes where. You got to look and say, okay, well, here, we're seeing a good return on the taxpayers' investment. This is a spot, an agency, a function that is worthwhile to invest more in. This one over here may not be producing the way we had hoped. And so maybe they, you know, they should have less resources. So how do we, how do you measure that return on investment for the billions of dollars that have been spent under your direction over the past five years?
Well, no, we did a two-hour presentation a week or two ago specifically on the capital budget and its impact. But I would summarize it by saying that the capital budget for the city of Baltimore, your portrayal on it's not very accurate in a useful way. The amount of flexible capital in the city of Baltimore is minimal. And as Director, when I realized how small the available capital really to the decision-makers of this city, how small it was. I mean, we presented a chart during the earlier hearing of what is not restricted and what is. It's really a very small amount of money. So I have total faith over the last five years. I watched this tiny crew in the Capital Budget Office slice and dice according to their criteria, which is published on our website, to fund the most essential things that we have. There is no fat at all in the capital budget in the parts that we can impact. The issue has been in growing the capital budget. And that takes fiscal discipline on the operating side. And the Finance Department has hurt us. And they have, they're working on the 10-year financial plan. And if that is able to free up operating capital to support debt, I mean, we've accomplished, the General Assembly sent in a huge amount of new HUR funding this year, $50 million of core funding in the state budget now, and a loan authorization going from $80 million to $125 million. It's a big year in terms of the capital budget. We, like, we're turning a corner here. And we may get to a point where we're not just doing emergencies. I think we're probably still in the, we will be in doing emergencies for a few more years. But eventually, we will be able to dig our hole out of. Our deferred maintenance bill on the capital budget for the eight agencies that participate in the capital budget is $2 billion. And there's another $2 billion in deferred maintenance just in the Department of Education. So it's a total of $4 billion of deferred maintenance. That is not new projects. That is not redoing Druid Park Lake Drive or the Hanover Street Bridge or the Highway to Nowhere. That is only in deferred maintenance. The agencies do a presentation every January to the Planning Commission. And they do their, to the extent that they need to, they do their homework on what they need to do their job. And they only receive a fraction of what they need to do their job. So really, the issue has been in finding a path forward to increase the size of the capital budget, particularly discretionary funding.
So I'm not sure what you feel is inaccurate. I mean, my question is pretty, just a pretty simple question, you know, on how we measure that return on investment. I'm not, I'm not coming to any conclusions on my own because I have not seen any of those metrics. I've seen your presentations you put out. I've seen the reports you put out. I read them with great interest because I'm a big believer on capital improvements. I think that we're way behind as a city on capital improvements. I think we spend far too much time and money on Band-Aids, on short-term programs that expire. And we're back to where we were before. I think that there's a lot of capital needs, which gets to my point of how do we, how do we know what that amount is or what we actually need if we're not measuring that return on investment? Because I've seen, I've seen you champion programs that have been Band-Aid programs, that are short-term, short-lived. And I don't see sort of like the big-picture planning that I hear from my constituents. So I'll give a perfect example. We have a lot of, you know, obviously, it's a big topic. People have been talking about this year about bike lanes. We have a lot of bike lanes in different parts of the city and different parts of the district. But what I see even between my district and Councilwoman Middleton's district is that there's no connectivity. So it's kind of like piecemeal. And so I would view that as like, okay, so this is a function that the Planning Department, when looking at a holistic approach, how do we plan, what do we do? As opposed to advising the agencies, hey, here's the big picture. So I'll just leave, I'll leave the whole capital thing with, I just don't see how it's being measured. The things that you've spoken about, you've spoken about some great programs. You've spoken about some things that frankly didn't work. But how do we measure that? And I think that when we go to the state or the federal government, we say, hey, we want some, we need more capital improvement money, which I think we all can agree, we were far behind on what our capital needs are. No matter where you throw that dart, across any agency, there's major capital needs. Where are we putting it and what is that return on investment? And if I was the governor or if I was the federal government issuing grants and I looked at some of the stuff, I would say, well, I need to know that if I give you another $100 million, that that is going to something that is going to, you know, provide a good return on investments for the taxpayers. But I'll leave it at that because I just haven't seen that. And if you have that, I'd love for you to send it to me. But then the last thing, you had also said, you spoke about grants that you guys have been handing out. Do you have a list of those grants that you can provide to the committee? If we can make that a committee request? And regarding those grants, did any of those grants go to, go to the Main Streets program?
So the, for PCDA, we are funding a...
Big grant.
Right. Right, for Park Heights. But these aren't necessarily grants specifically to Main Streets. But I'll take a second look. And yes, we do have a list.
Yeah, if you can provide that list to the committee. And regarding the Park Heights Main Streets, is that, is that something that somebody on your team is overseeing and managing?
No, there's a Main Street office in the mayor's office, actually, that manages the Main Street program.
Okay, so what is the Planning Department's role in the Main Streets program?
So while we funded through PCDA, or the PCDA, I should say, funded, the position that is over in the small, it's SMABD. I forget the acronym for the Department.
Okay, but there's no like technical assistance being...
Small minority and women-owned businesses, I think.
There's no technical assistance being provided?
For...
For the Main Streets program?
Specifically for Pimlico?
No, just in general.
I mean, we're not experts in small business. I would say probably if we're offering technical assistance, by the way, our Director of the Division is a former Main Street manager. But ours is more around the concept and process of becoming a Main Street.
Who's the Main Streets manager?
There is no Main Street manager.
Oh, okay, I thought you said...
No, Chad Hayes started out as a Main Street manager of Blair Edison Community.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Couple of, couple of years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right, and if I could add just a couple of points to the questions around the capital budget. So a couple of things. You know, one, as you mentioned, we do work in partnership with agencies. A lot of them have a Herculean task of trying to identify priorities based on the limitations of the actual budget. But we do work in partnership with them. City Administrator Leach has been, you know, very much been creative in terms of pulling together us as well as MOID and other agencies to have those sort of think-big conversations around the capital budget. And so we've been, you know, participating in those recent discussions. Yeah, I just wanted to add that additional context in terms of sort of what we are doing. And then in terms of your point about sort of return on investment, part of the work that Director Ryer mentioned and part of the additional positions that we will be creating within the Planning Department to support that work is for us to be able to better tell that story about what the overall impact has been, what the overall expenditure has been across all of the agencies in a more succinct and accessible way for the public. So that is part of why we are creating those positions because that's the direction that we're going in.
And can I add something? This is no secret. Return on investment is only one of, I believe, its seven criteria that we use to screen the capital budget. But the, all of them are on the capital budget website.
And Councilman, I'd also just like to chime in from the finance perspective regarding the capital budget. I think one of the things that is probably frustrating for you all and frustrating for your constituents is the length of time between when we identify the need for a capital project and when we're able to deliver the capital project. I think, and even, I think your example, bike lanes, is a good one here, too. Because the resource, the general fund equivalent resources on the capital side are so limited, we're not funding entire capital... we're not funding entire capital projects. And so we have this practice of accumulating appropriation over multiple years. So because we're not funding entire capital projects, we're diluting the Capitol Budget even further. And so that just adds to the length of time that it takes to deliver the capital projects. I also think it makes capital projects more expensive. Because the cheapest day to get under contract for a capital project is today. And every day that we delay that, that investment's getting more expensive. So as we have been, as I've been working with colleagues in planning to increase the general fund resources that are going to the Capitol Budget, as we have additional HUR resources that are going to the Capitol Budget, one of the things I've really been pushing is let's fund entire projects rather than figure out how we can move away from this piecemeal approach. Because if we keep doing this piecemeal approach, we're going to keep getting frustrated even as we work to increase the size of the Capitol Budget.
Right, so I mean, I'll just tell you, I mean, myself and most of my district were relatively patient people. And so we understand Capitol projects take a long time and we see through it. I could tell you the actual largest frustration that I see, that I have and I see in my district is once something actually comes to fruition and it's not the will of the community and it's not done the way that taxpayers think it should be done or money is spent on something that they don't think it should have been spent on or money was spent on stuff that they think is not really what they were looking for and they had, you know, more pressing priorities. I think that's where the bigger frustration comes from. And I think the planning plays a big role in that.
Mr. Chair, I've pulled up the evaluation criteria. If the Council would like me to run through them.
For?
For Capitol projects.
Do you want to just, can you email that to us, Director?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the back and forth here. I think it's indicative of, I think, a pretty significant challenge for the city. Despite all the plans we have, our ability to execute those plans based on the funding available with Capitol projects. I'm curious, do we know how large that need is? Do we have any assessment of how large our capital needs are for the city?
I can say generally, according to the eight agencies, that they have roughly documented a $2 billion backlog in deferred maintenance that does not include any new projects. If someone wants to build a new library or a new rec center, that is not part of that number. So $2 billion is the number that we've collected from the agencies.
That's really helpful. Because I think, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about, I think, $75 million, which is great, but it's really not even, you know, much more than a dent in the larger problem that we have with the maintenance of just our regular buildings and infrastructure across the city. And the need is significant. So I appreciate what you guys are working with. To that end, of course, you know, Director, one of the things I've been squarely focused on has been the impacts of climate change and the resilience of the city in being able to respond to the known impacts of climate change. That's heat, that's flooding, and all the other answerly detriments of climate change. I see, you know, my colleague here from the 14th and my future colleague from the 8th, both have districts that significantly deal with flooding every rainy season. Literally, buses floating down the road. We know these issues are coming, they're here, and they're going to get significantly worse. One of our biggest challenges, though, is funding the efforts to address those issues. If we're going to be a resilient city for the next 100 years, we need to start planning now, knowing that it's going to be very, very expensive. To that end, this Council, of course, passed a bill to research a resilience authority and scope out what that might look like for the city of Baltimore. As you know, a number of other counties across the... A number of counties across the state have already implemented resilience authorities, ones that we can learn from and maybe in some places copy. But the idea here is that a resilience authority would be eligible for funding that the city of Baltimore is not eligible for. For instance, in April of last year, the Vice President came to Baltimore to announce $2 billion that they are putting towards climate-related issues across America. I sat there, I literally spoke to the Vice President, which is the first time I had an opportunity to do that, and told her about our efforts around resilience. Was really, really happy to hear about that announcement. But we haven't made any progress. We were supposed to do a study. I want to know where that study is. It was due on April 15th. I want to know what progress we've made and when to expect that study.
So I'll give our Director a chance, but I do want to talk about some of the things we have done. So, for example, you're probably familiar with a... I don't know the final number now. It's at least $45 million a resilience project in South Baltimore. We've just applied for another $50 million with Anne Rundell County, Baltimore County, and Baltimore City. So there might be another chunk coming. I know, I'll let Ava speak for her organization, but we're hoping to do a new watershed study that will inform our harbor work, among other things. We have a team working on Harbor Place, the Promenade, the impact of sea level rise. And this watershed study will inform that. We pulled in five and a half, I mean, seven and a half million dollars for our resiliency hubs. These are community-based organizations around the city. There are a couple dozen of them now. So they have, they will have solar panels and battery backups for emergency situations and food-water distribution, storage of pharmaceutical medicines and formula and things like that. So there's, it's not that money's not coming in. There's a lot coming in, but I'll let Ava respond.
Before we go to Ava, I want to say you guys are doing really, really great work. It's just we know that the size of this problem is so much more immense than we have in our city coffers to handle. And so I'm really proud of the work that we're doing. I think we're doing some really innovative work, but it's not going to be enough, and we know that. So I, you know, to that end, I'm curious.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. Ava Richardson, Sustainability Director. I just want to acknowledge your continued focus on climate mitigation and adaptation issues, Councilman. We appreciate that dedication. To address the specific question about the study and report, we did meet with the CAO and your team about that. And unfortunately, there were just ongoing funding and capacity limitations to really meet that deadline. What I will say, based on the language that was in the bill, which referred to the update of our Climate Action Plan as well as the Disaster Preparedness Plan, those are critical efforts and steps in our climate action planning for the next decade plus. And so we were, we did complete those efforts in our starting the implementation of both of those plans this year, as well as continuing the implementation of our Sustainability Plan, which we continue to make incremental progress on an annual basis. That being said, there has been a lot of momentum and a lot of progress forward, especially with the Infrastructure Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and the funding that our office has been working really closely with Moet as well as other jurisdictions across the region to support. I think we have to put the desire for a resilience authority or any new climate governance structure in the greater context of how it adds value. The assumption that an authority necessarily allows us to go after funds that we don't have access to currently is something that I have to really interrogate. We are going after a lot of federal funds, and Moet is incredibly successful in that regard. So in terms of what those specific pots of funding are, again, we have to interrogate that and put the question of a resilience authority in the greater context. So we appreciate that, and we're really committed to answering those questions and getting that study done when we have the resources and the capacity to do so. So we appreciate your patience in that regard.
Yeah, I... Once again, I think to the effort that the Director talked about, we're doing great work in other places. It's still not enough, and we know it's not going to be enough. And my concern is we are now, and I've been talking about this since my first year on the Council, and we passed the bill, you know, a year and a half ago now. But this is something we've been talking about for a long time. So this is not new. This is not something that came out of nowhere. And in fact, other counties have implemented, created, and gotten federal funds already. It's in the paper, we can look it up. I mean, it's, so I think that the trouble here is we are being deliberative about being deliberative about getting things done, and that is totally useless. And it's so frustrating, so frustrating. It's a waste of everybody's time and money. We have real problems in front of us. And we all literally work for the city to resolve those issues. And I just don't feel a sense of urgency. I hear you guys are doing things, and I appreciate what you're doing. I think they are good things to do, but we know that it's not enough. And I'm not saying that you guys aren't working hard or that you guys don't have enough on your plates already, but you need more resources. And the city, Baltimore City, does not have that money, it's coffers. So we have to get that from somewhere else. The federal government is literally throwing money out the window in order to address these issues, and we are not eligible as a city to apply for that funding. I just, so I don't, I don't want... I, what I want... And I was promised this by the CAO and by you, Director, in the last meeting that we had, is that we would find a way.
I did not promise you that, but I understand...
I was promised by the CAO.
Okay, continue your statement.
That we would find a way to get a contractor to do the study so that we can move forward and decide whether or not this is something we want to pursue, something that is worth our efforts. And totally understand, yes, this is in the context of a broader question about how we're dealing with resilience, how we're dealing with issues of climate in the city of Baltimore. Agree a million percent. And we want to have those broader plans and ideas and things that we want to accomplish so that this can help us do that. But it's been years now that we've been talking about this, and others are light-years ahead of us at this point. And we're missing out on money on the table. So I just, knowing that we have a $2 billion list of things that are deferred maintenance that we must do in some way, shape, or form, knowing that we have these looming challenges with climate change, floods, heat, and otherwise that are really, you know, significantly detrimental to our communities, and knowing that we have other things that we want to do, things we want to build, things we want to invest in that aren't even on the table right now. It's really, really frustrating that we can't even do a study.
Well, I will say this, whether, you know, however we park money, if you see an opportunity to apply for federal or state funding that you think we could accomplish, I would really appreciate if you bring it to our attention. We'll be able to park it somewhere. But to your point about leaving money on the table, we're very aware of that. I think our team is on top of what they know. And we do work closely with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, which tracks the Federal Register. So we depend on them to track the Federal Register. But if you see something else available, I think your point's well taken. There's a lot of new sources at the federal level that we're not used to working with, we may not know exist, and I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, and to add to that, we've been pretty proactive at pursuing that funding. We probably have hundreds of millions of dollars of pending federal grant proposals.
We're not eligible for the funding, is my point. The city of Baltimore is not eligible for that funding. The funding is not to go to municipalities or government entities. It's intended for nonprofits, for CDFIs, and other entities that we are not eligible for. But with a resilience authority that is separate from the city, we could coordinate and have a resilience authority focus on city assets and city priorities that could focus on things that we know we need to accomplish. This is...
And Councilman, I just want to clarify, you're referring to the specific Solar for All Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund and some of the funding under the $20 billion that you mentioned, the Vice President. Is that what you're specifically referring to?
That, infrastructure readjustment funding. And some of that is split between things that go to nonprofits and things that go to municipalities and to government entities. So there are often separate lines of funding when you're looking at federal funding, things that cities cannot apply for. But if we have an entity that is also thinking about city priorities... Now, mind you, there may be entities that already exist. There might be. But we haven't even looked into it, and we're just, this is part of the study.
It's not accurate to say that we haven't looked into it, we certainly have. I'm familiar with a particular package of funding that you are referring to. And a lot of the details in terms of how that funding will be allocated to local and state government is still not entirely clear. But I think we'd be happy to have a more specific conversation with you about the different types of funding to unpack what specifically you're referring to. Because I think there's some, there's some lack of clarity here.
Director, I don't want to talk about it anymore. I just, I just want the study. We passed the law. What is there to talk about?
If, if you can identify funding for the study, I think I would work with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development to try to figure out what kind of firm or person that could do that study, that would have the, particularly the federal budget, I think, is what you're talking about. There's no reason why we couldn't step back and do a scan and see what we're missing. If you'd like, I can try to get an estimate for what that would cost.
Yeah, we'll do, because I want to move on to my second question. I'll request a plan. Please coordinate with the CAO. Because I think, at least the CAO and I are on the same page on this for how we're going to figure out how to do that study and a timeline to do so. And, you know, we'll figure out what timeline is appropriate. I just, I'm really tired of talking about this. And I'm trying to be nice about it, but I keep hearing, oh, we're doing all these other great things. And I agree with you, they're great things. It's just, I'm not, I'm not trying to address small problems here. We can't think small. This is not a small problem. This is a global issue that has huge ramifications for Baltimore City. We are a waterfront city. We're a waterfront city, like, what are we, what are we doing here? What are we doing? We can't pretend that we're not going to get hit by the train. So either we start acting now or we're setting ourselves up for failure. And I, I hold myself accountable to making sure that we do something about it, that's all.
Councilman, can you restate your formal request so that we have it logged properly?
Yes, the request is to, in coordination with the CAO, to have a plan and a timeline for the completion of this study. My second question, and I apologize, that went very long. If you want to come back to me, I'll...
I do. Unless you, is your request good?
My request is good, yeah.
All right, let me, I'm going to come back to you, Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks to my colleague for acknowledging our massive flood issues. My project to repair the massive flood issues is delayed by two years. Part of it is a redesign, which I like better, by the way. But part of it is we need to go after funding and everything gets more expensive as to what the Budget Director was seeing. So, and I know that the project is a high priority for the Mayor's Office, so I know that they're hitting on all cylinders trying to figure out how to make this work. I do like the new redesign, though, just for the record. And so I wanted to just also say that I really believe strongly that I know the detailed work that the Planning Department and the Planning Commission go through for the Capitol Budget. I have sat in on a lot of those hearings, which I appreciate the opportunity to comment when I'm there. I do think that it needs to come before the Council as well. And that's something that... that I'd like to work on with the Mayor's Office, as well as the Council President's Office for next time, and sort of what would that look like, in terms of additional hearings or what that would be? Just because unless we're intentionally paying attention, we have to pass it. So I think we need to have a little bit more detail on it, so, just to point in, in that direction. So let's just switch gears all the way around here. My, my first question is about the proposal that has come out of the comprehensive planning work, which I appreciate the detail on, regarding the timing of zoning changes. My understanding, from the briefing we got, I don't know when that was, oh, it was during a council hearing on a different bill, was that there was a proposal to only make, I could be wrong on this, this is why I'm asking, only make changes to the zoning code at certain times of the year. Is that, could you talk a little bit about that proposal and what that looks like?
I'll start, and, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Tiso in a minute. So, back up, big picture. Legally, a, a zoning map is based on a land use map, right? In every jurisdiction in Maryland, except for the city of Baltimore. The excuse in the past has been that the city's built out, doesn't need a land use plan, but we know that it's a very dynamic city, and it's changing a lot, and the land use pattern is and will change. So our proposal is to introduce a land use map into the comprehensive planning process, right? All this is new. Comprehensive planning process is new, it's mandated now on a, on a 10-year interval. So we've looked at the other jurisdictions, we work very closely with Baltimore County, we know all the mistakes they make, we don't want to do what they're doing. So we've proposed what we think is a very nimble and, a very nimble process for making land, making zoning changes based on a, on a land, on a land use plan. So quick and nimble, we want to maintain our advantage in the development world with development community, but we also want it to be legally sustainable and predictable. So Eric can go in the details, but we're essentially proposing a land use map that would be updated on, I think, every four years. And what we would try to do is collect all of our zoning changes in any calendar year and do them all at once, which is not that much of a stretch, when you think about how long it takes to get a land use bill through the process. It takes six months now. Plus, we would, we would still have the, the ability to do individual zoning changes, they would just be held to a slightly higher standard. So the, the legal standard would be higher if it's out of the cycle of the land use plan. Am I butchering this entirely, or...
No, I think you, you hit all the high points, and this summer makes 24 years of service here in planning, and I have been slowly nudging our development oversight process to standard planning practice, if it kills me. The good part is, because our Planning Commission Chair said that he was concerned about staff capacity to handle an annual process. We handle about 15 to 20 rezoning bills ballpark a year, that seems to be the, the recent year's averages, so I don't think it's too hard to look at the, the sum total if they were swept up into one comprehensive look. The biggest thing is not being so reactive. The second most important thing is having that generalized land use map, the way I explained it at the comprehensive plan meeting a week ago. If you step back from the zoning map and squint a bit, by having those general categories, it also helps limit some of the wild departures we sometimes get in requests for rezoning to keep things a little bit more compatible. And the reason for timing the four-year look to four years is just so that it syncs up with the council schedule for practical purposes. If we time it about to the second year, freshman members have time to get their feet under them, and then there's enough room to run in the session to get it through. So that's the theory.
But there would, but there would be an opportunity, we'll just use an example in my district. We, we're rezoning the 3,000 block of Elm, right, in Darby. That was out of a need for dealing with the variance issue, which I'll talk about in a second. But let's just say, this not in the four-year cycle, right? So, but, we wanted to do this because of a timing issue with one of my constituents on that block, right? So we didn't want to wait for that, for that timeframe. So what would, we would still go through the regular legislative process. Is there a different criteria that would then be used?
No, it's, it would be the same process as you have now. The only difference is that by doing a collection in an annual process, we get to be more consistent in looking at all of them in parallel, and it's a comprehensive rezoning, not a piecemeal rezoning. So if you have one that just can't wait, and I know we'll never be able to get away from that, because things happen, we always have to have that safety valve, it would look exactly like it does today.
So...
You introduce a bill, we, we run it through the process, they have to justify change, mistake, all of that is the same as it is today.
Oh, okay, I thought I understood from the Director that there would be different criteria.
Well, it's harder to do it that way, because when you're doing a piecemeal rezoning, you have to justify what changed since the last comprehensive rezoning of the city, what mistake was made, and by mistake, we mean it was a literal, like a transcription error or some kind of thing, not we found something higher and better, more profitable, right? That part, when you're looking at a comprehensive rezoning, it's more of a policy decision, and we're not held to that stricter standard. So it should make the carrot of waiting for the annual process is, it's a comprehensive rezoning, much like we did in 2017. We didn't have to justify every little thing, it's, this is, this is it. But otherwise, the, the one-off piecemeal rezonings, that process will stay exactly the same.
So I see what you're saying. Okay, so what you're, if I can reflect back, so this every four-year comprehensive look is, really is based on the land use map, but also what we're seeing in our districts, what they're, what people are interested in in terms of looking at neighborhood change a little bit more broadly, those sorts of things, whereas the one-offs or the blocks rezone still have to go through that stricter criteria, because when we're doing comprehensive zoning, we don't have to look at mistake or neighborhood change in the strict sense. We would have to look at that in the, these rezonings, is that correct?
Right, so the, the four-year update to the generalized land use map informs the rezonings of individual properties. So for example, if we have some of our industrial areas that are feeling a lot of pressure from intrusion from residential, we would look at those areas and say, no, we really want this to stay industrial. Or there might be an area of, this is shifting more in a different direction. When we change the, the general land use map, it doesn't actually do a rezoning at that time, it just enables it, it justifies it, it calls for it. And then the annual rezoning process opens the door for folks to apply and request changes.
Right, so I remember participating, I wasn't on the council at the time, but participating in some of those zoning code meetings, and because the code itself is an alphabet soup of a lot of different stuff, it's very hard for residents to figure it out, right? My predecessor was just an expert on this, and still is. And so a land use map, let's just take that for a second. The public going through it during this particular process that you're working on now, had the opportunity to kind of look online, if they had an online capability, to sort of say, no, this really should not have as much density, I'm just using examples, this shouldn't have as much density as what you want it, what the land use map is, and then was able to give input in that way. So what's going to be the process moving forward? Because there, again, we still have online capacity issues, not everybody can come to a meeting, I just want to make sure that we're still allowing for a very robust public process relative to a land use map every four years, so that the council then translates the land use map into zoning speak, or at least uses it as a guide, you know, moving forward. So I, I think that the, the process on a land use map, it actually may be easier for residents than just talking about zoning, so I'm all about that, I appreciate it. I just want to make sure that there's, you know, the really robust outreach, so that, again, when, you know, one particular neighborhood that I'm thinking about in my district is saying, no, I don't want that much density, you all know which one it is, then we, they, everybody knows what that is. Or I have another, you know, neighborhood that wants more density, and what does that, you know, look like? I'm just using density as example, there's all kinds of other things. So talk about that process a little bit. I know that you've done a lot of work for the comprehensive plan, and doing a land use map at the same time, so there could be a little bit of confusion between the two in terms of how those, how those things work out. So just talk a little bit about that outreach plan moving forward, if we're going to end up doing it every four years.
Sure, and I'll look over my shoulder at Sarah, who's leading the, the comprehensive plan process. I think what's been done to date is more or less just the draft, the formal process is going to be coming out soon, and it's going to have to be approved legislatively. But ongoing, once we have the first map and we're doing those updates, yes, there will have to be public outreach processes. I think I've only mentioned Chad in passing, you know, we're going to have to start thinking about the timing of that. So if the annual zoning window is, you know, this three-month period of time, leading up to that, we're going to have to have outreach to the residents to re-explain, here's how zoning works, here's how this process works, here's how you can best engage with that and understand the process, and, and really work with it, so that they're prepared to speak to their, their community needs when that window opens. But I'll look over my shoulder in case anybody wants to jump in on timing and, and process.
I thought, I'm sorry, I must have missed this. I thought this was going to be done every four years, not every year.
No, no, the, yes, there, there's two parts to it. So one is the four-year general land use map, right? We're going to have to do outreach for that. Also, in addition, separately, the annual rezoning, we have to do outreach for that also.
I'm sorry, I thought we were doing a rezoning every four years, and that in between, if we had a bill that we wanted to pass that was a rezoning, that, that's what we would do. We wouldn't be doing it just in three months of the year.
Right, so the annual window to request rezonings, actually individual property rezonings, we're hoping to channelize that into once a year. That rezoning is informed by the land use plan, which is updated every four years. I know, it, it uses a lot of similar terms, it's easy to get confused.
If, if I can, there's, there's three different levels. So there's revisions to the land use map every four years, which is used as the basis to inform rezoning requests, and then there's an annual rezoning request, where we're hoping most rezoning requests will fall into that annual window, so we'll have that three-month period. And then there's an opportunity for what we will maybe call ad hoc rezoning requests. So if people can't meet that annual timeline, they can make the request at any time of year. So there's three different timelines and three different actions going on.
Got it, I got it now, thank you. And so during this annual, like this, I'm just making this up. So let's say between January and March, okay, you're saying to the world, hey, if you've got a rezoning that you want to do, bring it to us now, bring it to your council member, and we'll take a look at it before we introduce it, right? Well, and then, is the standard of mistake or neighborhood change still applied during that three-month timeframe?
Not for the comprehensive rezoning, no.
Yep, I'm just talking about the annual one.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that is, and I, I now see where the, the confusion is coming in. There's piecemeal rezonings, and there's comprehensive rezonings. Okay, that's where you're actually changing the district. A piecemeal is when you've got a one-off property, a comprehensive rezoning is where you have a cluster or a collection of, of properties.
Correct.
So not to be confused with the general land use plan, which is the bigger picture thing. So the annual process doesn't have that higher standard of change or mistake, it's a policy decision. And that's why it's, I hesitate to say easier to get things through, but it doesn't have that challenge of meeting the change or mistake that sometimes we struggle with trying to prove when we're doing a piecemeal rezoning.
So what criteria would you use?
The general land use plan informs those rezonings, neighborhood plans, all of that, depending on where it is, community interest, all informs that rezoning.
So just to be clear, this is if we're just changing, again, for example's sake, R7 to R8, let's say, like a category, not height, not conversions, not anything within those categories...
Correct.
Or conditional uses.
Right.
So conditional uses can happen at any time.
Correct.
It's just that if you want to change a zoning category from IMU to C1, again, an example, that's the timeframe to do it.
Correct. Otherwise, you're talking about text amendments, that's a legislative process as per normal, that doesn't change.
Right, well, because within each category, there are some, you know, conditional uses, and non-conformances, and bloody, bloody, that we deal with all the time...
Right.
...that come before us, and some go to the board.
Correct.
Okay. And so this doesn't, this doesn't, the, the board scenario in terms of the zoning board, right, they would still take appeals for, you know, conditional uses, et cetera, et cetera. That is not included in what you're talking about here.
All the same.
So they would still, well, we'll see them tomorrow. So I would like to ask them these questions, too, in terms of how this, you know, affects their operations, as well as the variance requests. Like, I can just see a lot of confusion happening here relative to timeframes and stuff.
For the board, it shouldn't impact them at all, because the code is what it is. When somebody applies, if they have a need for conditional use or variance, they apply for it, and none of that changes. What you sometimes hear Director Witt mentioning, where we have a lot of non-conforming structures all over the city, and part of that, on a quick history lesson, prior to the 1971 zoning code, there were two different maps, one that was a height and bulk map, and another one that was a use, and the way they overlapped in creative ways, when they got shoehorned into a standard Euclidean-style zoning code in 1971, you can't make everything perfect. It's just impossible to do that. So where you see in a lot of neighborhoods that are just a little off, based on the zoning district they're in, but with a built form that they have, and a lot of them come in for, you know, setback variances or what have you, there's a balance in frustration, and I think Councilor Schleifer encounters this a lot. We can either change the bulk requirement for the district, or you have to deal with the need for variances, because that's the built form. Now, I'll give the caveat, though, if you change the bulk standards of the district, permitted is permitted is permitted. So, you know, just be careful of what changes you make, because then it's a permit over the counter, and sometimes, some communities appreciate having that public venue and not in others.
Well, no, this is why we did it the way we did it on Elm and Darby, right? Because I could have changed the zoning code to allow for the bulk regulation to be 60% of the lot area covered, as opposed to 50%, and just make it by right, and instead, what I did was, I just rezoned it so that we could actually have a conver, I'm starting to, I put in a bill, we haven't finished it yet, so that we could have a conversation with the neighbors about, you know, what is it that they want, and how does this work, right?
Right, and, and also, R7 is R7 regardless of where it is. Some neighborhoods may want their R7 to look one way, and another might have a different look or feel to their neighborhood, same zoning district, same bulk standards. So if you change the base district, you're changing it everywhere, and that's sometimes that balancing of, do we...
Exactly, that's why I did it this way, that's why I did it this way, yeah.
Right, so that's the choice that you have, do you change the base requirements that apply to everybody, or do we change the district assigned to this one neighborhood because it fits better for them? That's a decision that has to be weighed.
Thanks for explaining all of that, I appreciate it. I have some thinking to do on it, because I might have some other suggestions. But does that, I guess the last question on this particular piece, does that, that cadence of work need to come before us? Or that's just something that you're suggesting very strongly for the next council to do?
It's a suggestion at this point in time. I'm hoping that that is the direction that, that this goes. I mean, obviously, it is your prerogative to introduce legislation, when and how you choose, and we'll need to look at how the mechanics of an annual rezoning... And we'll need to look at how the mechanics of an annual rezoning process will work. We're not quite there yet, but it's my hope that that's where we'll land.
I, I do think we need to have a conversation about the criteria in that annual process. Because there's that balance that we have to strike between by right and by, and having hearings and all of that. But also there's this, there's something to be said for mushy sometimes and very, very strategic other times. I mean, that's just the way life goes. And so I, I just, we need to have that conversation. So it would be interesting to maybe get a few of us that have been, you know, thinking about this to think through it with you. So I appreciate, thank you for the dialogue on this. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have or intend to update the healthy food priority areas maps? I know one of the biggest issues that we experience across the city are lack of grocery stores. Certainly that's one of the issues in my district. And of course those maps help inform tax credits for grocery stores to open up. So have we, have we updated that map? Do we have intentions of updating that map and when is the timeline that we might expect?
Yeah, I'll let Taylor LaFave answer that. But I will note that I don't think the tax credits have worked very well. But just with that comment, Taylor, you want to talk about the?
Yep. We'll be releasing an update to the map tomorrow at 2:30 PM at our Food Pack meeting. That'll be the first update since 2018. And it's taken about a year and a half of work to do that. So obviously welcome to attend Food Pack tomorrow at 2:30. But after the, the, the meeting, we will have the updated map on our website.
That is phenomenal.
That is the award for the timeliest update of this budget season. Thank you.
Give that man a raise.
And Taylor, actually, do you mind just talking about how your team has now taken the lead and the development of that? Oh, sorry. Taylor, could you just talk a little bit about how your team has taken the lead on that effort?
Sure. Yep. So historically, as you may know, going back over a decade, our team worked very closely with the Johns Hopkins Center for Liveable Future to create the first map in 2012 and then to subsequently update them multiple times. The reason why, and Councilman Torrance isn't, isn't here to discuss this today, but the reason why this has taken longer is because in the last couple of years, the Center for Liveable Future is still a close partner of ours. But they have, I think due to their larger funding structure, has sort of shifted the direction of their work. So essentially they have not been able to help us at all with these maps. Other than in the last couple of months, as we're getting to the finish line, they've been very generous to, to review the maps as a, as a second set of eyes. But historically, we were able to work with many grad students and hundreds of hours of CLF staff time to update the maps. And so this time around, it's just been my team that's done that. And a big thanks, and thankfully right now through ARPA funding, we have two Baltimore Core Fellows. And, and one of those fellows, Jessica Fink, she's done a lot of work on this over the last year plus. So that's why it's taken a little bit longer this time around. But yeah, we are basically done. They'll be released tomorrow.
That's great. Love it. I'll go on to my second question. See, I'm ma, I'm making up time, Mr. Chair. My next question is about zero waste and the partnership relationship with DPW and how we think that effort is going. Can you give me some insight on how we think that's going?
Sure. I'll defer to Ava on that.
Sure. We work really closely with the Office of Waste Diversion as well as the Solid Waste Team. So they do have a waste working group and under that waste working group, they're pursuing several different initiatives, including zero waste trainings for all new DPW staff during their orientation phase, as well as putting together a sustainable procurement committee so that we can embed sustainability in how we're procuring materials and supplies across the city. And then as, as you're aware, the $4 million EPA grant was awarded and leveraging capital funds. I know the Solid Waste Team, they're working on building out the plans for that facility. So that's very exciting. And then they're also implementing the Solid Waste Management Plan. I don't want to speak for the Solid Waste, the Waste Diversion Office. But yeah, so those are some just high level updates.
Were they an active part of the Climate Action Plan discussion?
Absolutely. We made it very clear that we were aligning the Climate Action Plan to create continuity with the Solid Waste Management Plan and specifically mentioned our waste challenges as it related to incineration as well as diversion and all the behavior change that we want to support in order to reduce waste across cities.
Got it. And, and a similar line, what about DGS? I know they've been really leaning into efforts around buildings and especially around zero emission vehicles. Have they been a part of that conversation? How have efforts gone with DGS?
Yep. DGS, the Energy Director Julia Kelos and her team, they were very involved in the climate action planning process as well. And subsequently, we've been pursuing, again, a lot of federal grant proposals along with even the Parking Authority looking at a broad array of energy and climate, excuse me, energy efficiency, renewable energy upgrades. And so some of those include direct pay or elective pay, if you're aware of that, which it'll allow the city to receive federal tax credits or non-tax entities in, in general. And so we're trying to figure out what types of projects will be pursued with that type of funding and support and how or if that complements or leverages the CIP funds as much as possible. But that's really a game changer for a lot of cities. Solar for All was awarded to the state of Maryland at the amount of $63 million. And so we are waiting to hear from the state what that'll look like in order for local governments to take advantage of that funding. And we know that with the EJ 40 or the Justice 40 goals, Baltimore should be very well positioned to receive a lot of that funding. And then there's been several other smaller DOE or EPA grants for enraging kind of like funding levels that we've been working with their team on through our Buildings and Energy Group.
Good, good. And then lastly, I'm going through all the partnerships that should be happening if you don't see what I'm doing here, is DHCD. We talked with them earlier about efforts around cool roofs and, you know, the implementation of that policy. Their answer was a mixture of answers in that they could look at some of their internal efforts to look at the permitting process and where they can weigh in. But as far as educating folks, they deferred to sustainability and said that they would work with you guys on executing that effort. And I'm, I'm curious if we've thought much about how to properly notify people about the cool roofs ordinance and encourage folks to, when they're replacing their roofs, install cool roofs as a sensible option.
Yeah, it's a good question. Two kind of pieces to that. The weatherization assistance program under GHCD, they, with all of the upgrades and the energy supports or retrofitting that they provide to households that qualify for those programs, they do try to embed cool roofs into those upgrades, which is great that they've standardized that process. So for other developments or other scenarios where people are updating properties and putting in new roofs, yeah, we could definitely do more education and outreach around that. I think that's an excellent point. And work with DHCD on that. I, I think there's different ways to approach that, but yeah, that, that's a fair point. So we'll, we're happy to support that.
Yeah. If, can I request as a follow-up, just an update on the coordination between HCD and sustainability on education or our plan for educating folks around cool roofs so that we can encourage more folks to do so? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to talk a little bit about the ARPA funding that you have. I'm a huge fan of the Clean Core Program. I'm very happy that it's doing well in my district. It actually, the whole concept started in my district, so I'm really excited about that. I wanted to talk instead about the middle neighborhoods strategy and the wealth building strategy. If you could let me know, how's that going? The accounting on spend, who's taking, you know, who's taking advantage of these opportunities? That would be amazing.
I can start. Cole might be able to add. But there are four components to the ARPA spending on middle neighborhoods. They total about $10 million. The largest component is around legacy homeowner repair managed by Housing and Community Development. Second largest is developer incentives, I think. That is also managed by Department of Housing and Community Development. The third component is the sort of community organizing component is what I call it. It's like putting money into neighborhood partners to participate in the, in the middle neighborhood strategy. And the, and the fourth one is a, essentially a tenant conversion program that's managed by Live Baltimore. All of these are specific to a certain group of neighborhoods. Recently, I believe, so Live Baltimore manages the tenant conversion program. Healthy Neighborhoods manages the community organizing piece. They have four new staff people for that. And I believe they are going to administer both the development incentives and the legacy home repair within the middle neighborhoods for HCD. So that is a contract in process right now. So they're, all, all four are up and running and staff, staff are on board. And that area is selected. I'm not sure, anything else I should add?
I, I do have a report from Live Baltimore about their section, so you don't need to brief us on that. I'll share that with the committee. I'm curious about, so if I understand you correctly, the middle neighborhoods and wealth building line items went to the Department of Plan, this is what I understand from ARPA, they went to the, you all, the Department of Planning to administer.
So wealth building did go directly to DHCD in terms of legacy residents. We received one, about 1.187 in what we're calling middle neighborhood developer incentives. So that is what the Planning Department applied for and received. And then of course DHCD will be administering that. So they, along with their impact investment area incentives, they rolled them both out at the same time a few months ago. I will acknowledge, I think that the middle neighborhood incentives, you know, the take-up rate has been a little slower than the impact, impact investment area developer incentives. But the application has continued to be open. And then now we are, because of, partly because of some rules around ARPA in terms of getting the money obligated by the end of the year, we're working with Healthy Neighborhoods. And in fact, you know, because of that reason as well, as since they are already doing the organizing work. And so we're utilizing them. They are a really great partner in terms of, you know, continuing to amplify the message. And then also they're now, would now be a part of the process for both those developer incentives as well as the home repair grants.
Okay. So the middle neighborhoods money was like a million dollars, right?
So.
A million five. You just said a million five.
Oh, which one you're talking about? So for the developer incentives, it's about 1.187 at Planning received. And then yes, about another million dollars for the organizing work. So about, so two ARPA-funded middle neighborhoods projects through Planning, about a million dollars each.
Organizing component includes the staff, the organizers themselves, a training budget and.
Block project.
Block project money.
I'm familiar with the Healthy Neighborhoods model. I think that that makes sense in this context with the, with the middle neighborhoods. I know my colleague from the second district is very interested in what's going on, particularly in her area because we pretty much developed the middle neighborhood strategy so that other neighborhoods besides impact investment areas would be able to get attention. I totally agree with it. I think it makes sense. What I'm trying to find here is the list of the ARPA dollars that went to DHCD, or not DHCD, but housing in general. I guess what I can do just to save time on this, since we've got just a few minutes left, is, is to ask a formal request of those line items. So middle neighborhoods, wealth building, and the accounting and who the partners are. If it's DHCD, if it's Healthy Neighborhoods as a formal request. And then, and the amount of spend in terms of what's obligated and what's, what's spent as well. I've been asking this of, of DHCD is like for their line items too.
Sure. And just really quickly for the public, and I can send you the list as well. For wealth building, it's $4 million. So that is what went to DHCD directly. For R2, as I said, one is 1.87, the other $1 million. And then Live Baltimore, you might already have that in the report and I'm scanning. Oh, here we go. 3.4 million for Live Baltimore. So altogether $10 million.
Yes. Okay. I ha, like I said, I have Live Baltimore's report. I just, I haven't looked at it yet, but I know it's in my inbox. If I can just get those line items that you just talked about, that would be great.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to that request, the ARPA funds and spending for the Food Policy and Planning Division, if at all possible.
Sure. Nice, big ARPA dollars request. Yep. So I'll email it, LCC, my colleague, and he'll add to it and we'll be all set. Okay?
Please make sure you send a margarita and copy me. Please and thank you.
Yep. And then my other question, Director, you had mentioned in your presentation, and you may have just been saying this in passing, but I just wanted to clarify, managing of the vacant lots. And we know through historic Project Core funding that we now have a ridiculous amount of vacant lots that are impossible to maintain because we're also not getting funding from the state to maintain the lots, right? We are also embarked in a massive effort to, because most of those lot have lots, if they're not city-owned, have very high tax liens. And so we want to get those into the city's coffers through INREM, right? Happy about that. We're also getting more Core funding, which I'm grateful, we, the city of Baltimore, the boundaries are getting more Core funding. Part of it is going to go to MSA to demolish more properties. So when you mentioned about managing vacant lots, were you talking about the Clean Core Program? Were you talking about creating something new that would be a vacant lots management thing? What were you, what were you talking about there? I'm sorry I missed it and I appreciate your, the opportunity for you to, to repeat it. Thank you.
Yes. I, I was talking about the Clean Core Program. Bigger picture is that when Core was created 10 years ago, it was essentially created to do demolition. It was a demolition program originally. Now we've moved really far away from that now. It's not primarily a demolition program anymore. But we went through a period of doing whole block demolition and doing assemblages and trying to create developable lots out of a demolition strategy that's not random or one-off. That morphed into the impact investment areas where HCD determined they had the resources, whether they be money or land, to initiate a redevelopment strategy. But that is only about a third of, I'm guesstimating, of the vacant land that we have in the city, whether it's created by Core or not. And it's self-evident that vacant land is better than a vacant building. But there's still evidence that a vacant land that's not managed is a detriment to the neighborhood, to the well-being of the residents, to the property tax revenue and such. And historically, as you probably know, there was tension between Public Works and HCD over the management of that. The inspections lives in one agency, the crews live in another agency. All that is evolving and changing because of INREM. But as a city, there. But as a city, there is no financial structure to manage vacant lots.
Correct. Got it.
And the problem because of INREM will become even more direct, because we will be the owner over time. We've had an excuse for a while that we didn't own it, so we weren't responsible. But that will change. You know, all I can say is, absent of funding, we'll do the best we can with Clean Core for the time period that we can. We haven't started talking to Public Works or anyone else about a permanent vacant land management strategy. But also, we haven't adjusted our redevelopment strategy because of INREM either, right? It's just kind of evolving. There's plenty of work already, and the resources are already stretched thin. But we will hopefully update our redevelopment strategy to minimize the amount of vacant land that we are holding for long periods of time. That's not a good answer.
And I could add to that as well. I just wanted to note, even though you didn't ask specifically about Clean Core, yes, we have expanded to now additional 10 neighborhoods as a part of a regional model. So some of the neighborhoods that were originally eligible, so that, you know, we could really spread Clean Core services throughout those neighborhoods as well. And then, so as a part of that, we're also in the process of, you know, going out and talking to our philanthropic partners, as well as other agency partners, for additional funds for our Clean Core to continue. In some capacity, we've also talked to Commissioner Kennedy. So she has acknowledged that within, you know, the vacant housing strategy, that, you know, a component around lot maintenance is, has already been included. And so we are going to be working with DHCD to determine whether or not, you know, some version of Clean Core could continue to be a part of that whole process going forward.
I see what you're saying now. So if I can reflect back, there, we have a vacant property strategy that the mayor and GPC and others have put together that brings in the dollars, okay? And the dollars, if we get all of that, is a ton of money, right? And it needs to be used for acquisition disposition, redevelopment, developer incentives, subsidies. And what you're trying to do is to say lot maintenance as well, right?
Commissioner Kennedy is saying that as well.
So, okay, I got it now. So really, you're really focused on trying to elevate this issue based on the work you've done on Clean Core, based on what we learned from Project Core, that we need to maintain these lots, like that's just the bottom line, right? And we had this conversation with DPW whenever it was. It's all running together. So I understand now. So you're just trying to elevate the issue that some of those dollars that are coming in, in whatever stream it is, because there's like four streams, to make the case that maintenance needs to be a part of that piece, okay? Understood. Thank you very much. I still believe very strongly that we need all the tools for redevelopment of our communities in a block-by-block approach. So part of the lot strategy needs to be about, what are we doing with this entire block? Whether there's a house on it or not? Like what is, and if maybe part of the block has lot and part of the block has a house, et cetera? So that we're looking at utilizing INREM, INREM 1, INREM 2, vacancy tax will be a part of that, all of those tools. And I would posit that, and have made the case on this, that the crisis and the maintenance and the work and the need to be strategic about what we're doing in our neighborhoods, we just need all the tools. And I have a piece of legislation that I'm waiting on for hearing to create Baltimore's land bank, so that we're increasing capacity, not taking away, but increasing capacity to be able to utilize INREM, utilize all the approaches to be able to manage and make sure that we are really addressing, I think it's a crisis, and making sure that we're really paying attention to areas that really need it most, that have been the most ignored as well. So I'm just putting that out there, as we need to continue to work on that particular piece. Thank you very much for explaining to me what you're trying to do in terms of elevating the issue relative to maintenance. And I would say that it's not just lot maintenance, but we got a lot of high grass and weeds on a lot of properties as well that we need to, that we need to address. So thank you.
Clean Core, I mean, it was built on the COVID epidemic when DPW was sort of wiped out as an agency. So it does things other than vacant lot maintenance to try to catch up or allow DPW to catch up to their backlog. But it will, it is, I would argue, is sort of a Cadillac model in the way we've integrated workforce development and support and neighborhood involvement. But it will give us some cost estimates for what doing this work, what it takes to do this work. So it should give us a tool for planning in the future about how to manage vacant land that's not going to be developed in the near future.
Well, so as you are looking at those costs, right? I mean, you're saying it takes this much of a Clean Core crew to mow these, this square area of lot, and it costs this much. That is really important data to have. So as you're, I hope you're going to build a report around it? And if not, I'm asking you to? Because I think that's going to be really important information. We just had, there was a report from 21st Century Cities last year that was released that basically showed that we are spending about $100 million a year on, you know, dealing with maintaining vacant properties, which include vacant lots.
Councilman, do you want to make that a formal request?
Yep, I'm going to make that. Yep, absolutely. And a lot of that is the vacant lot maintenance, but it's also police, fire, et cetera. And a lot of those were estimates. I would posit it's more. But I would love that information. So if you can create a report based on Clean Core work relative to maintaining vacant properties and vacant lots, and I can, we can work with you on what exactly that would look like. And I would say, we've been doing this for a year, right? So two years?
Yes. So one year right now, just finishing up the first year. But for the record, I do want to say within that time period right now, we're at 9,000 lot services, so cleaning and mowing, 5,000 alley services, and over 800 tons of trash in Clean Core neighborhoods.
Yeah. I want to, we are at the hour, and I did have one very quick question, and I just want to ask it quickly, if that's okay, Councilman, before we wrap up. I wanted to ask about our, the metrics that we have for our outcomes on the 2012 Climate Action Plan, the 2024 Climate Action Plan, and the 2019 Sustainability Plan. So first, just sort of looking at this, and Director, I don't, I swear to God, I'm not picking on you at all. It's just, this is what I'm truly passionate about. So if you feel it, that's what it's about. So just want to understand what we're looking at here. I don't, for 2020, for the 2012 plan, it looks like we are noting the incremental progress per year, 6%, 6%, 3%, so on and so forth. We don't have a sense of the overall accomplishment, like how much of that total we've completed for 2012 or...
That particular metric, the way that it was set up, and some of this was related to going back and forth with audits in terms of how they wanted a better, more reflective measure or metric of that, of the progress on the Climate Action Plan. It looked at the number of actions that were actually completed in the Climate Action Plan. And we track kind of like on our end, definitely cumulatively, what that number looks like. But what gets published in the budget book is just the annual progress. So for the 2012 plan, it's that year-over-year progress, and it ends up looking a little small from year to year, but we know where it stands.
Do we know the total?
For the Climate Action, for the 2012, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get it to you.
Yes. Can we get the totals for all three of those metrics? That would be really helpful.
Yes.
I imagine for 2024, it's probably going to be 1% if...
Right, right, right. But it is, for the Sustainability Plan, cumulatively, it is around 57% of the actions that have been either initiated or progressed, since the plan was, since implementation started in 2019.
Yes.
Councilman Conway, can you formally state what your request is?
I'm looking for the total percentage of each of those respective plans that have been completed to date.
Okay.
That's all. So appreciate you guys, appreciate the great work you're doing. I really wish we had more money. And so, you know, we're going to continue to try to think creatively about that. I'm sure you are as well. This hearing is in recess until 1 PM, and we'll have Ruckin Parks. Thank you.
Great, thanks.